3:01.
All right, I'd say let's get the show on the road if that's all right with everybody. I've got a few minutes after 3:00.
We are now live.
Welcome, everybody. Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to begin the 2020 installation and reorganization for the Leon County Board of County Commissioners. Before we start, I want to acknowledge that we're living in unprecedented times, in case anybody hadn't read the news, and today's commission meeting is certainly a reflection of that. That said, today's ceremony is as important as always, may look a little different than some of the ones we've had in the past, and I'm just going to go through some of the changes so that everybody's aware. Face coverings will be worn at all times. We've installed Plexiglas dividers at the dais and at the lectern. Temperature screening for all attendees. We've got seating which is socially distanced per CDC guidelines. There are overflow rooms with socially distanced seating available for the public, and the swearing in will be conducted in a socially distanced manner. Speaking of the swearing in ceremony, I want to acknowledge Chief Judge Sherstrom, who I saw there. Welcome, Judge. Nice to have you. Thank you very much. And I think we have the clerk, Gwen Marshall, here too. I didn't see Gwen. Thank you. Hey, Gwen, how are you? Later in the program, the chief judge will be installing the newly elected commissioners, and the clerk will be conducting the reorganization of the board vote. And at this point, I would like to recognize our vice chairman, Rick Miner, to introduce the speaker bringing today's invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm honored today to introduce Pastor Clarence Jackson of Destiny Church, Tallahassee. Over the years, Pastor Jackson and his congregation have established a strong record for service, organizing food and clothing drives to help those in need. He also has a strong, he also has strong ties to our neighbor in Gaston County, having served as mayor and as a city commissioner of Gretna. Pastor Jackson, sir, would you please provide the invocation? All rise.
Let us bow. God, we thank you. In spite of being in perilous times, you keep showing us that you are good, and you keep showing us that you are God. Today, God, we ask that you strengthen these commissioners. We ask that you lead them. We ask that you guide them. And, God, we ask that you use them to be what the people of this county needs, to see better days and more prosperous days in a world where there's so much despair. God, we pray now that you make Leon County a beacon of hope through them, cause them to seek common ground in a world that's filled with so much division. God, we're believing you, that you're going to bless this county through them. And, God, in a world that seems void of you so often, God, we pray that you use them in a mighty way so that the world can see you through them. God bless our county. Bless our commissioners. Bless their decisions. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and this is the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we've got two commissioners that we are going to recognize for years of service today. We've got Commissioner Dozier and Commissioner Maddox. So I would ask Commissioner Dozier if you would meet me at the podium. It is my esteemed honor to be the, to recognize Commissioner Dozier for 10 years of service today. She has been a phenomenal commissioner, and I will tell you, my personal relationship with Kristen goes back, her father's one of my best friends, and so when she got high, when she got elected, I said, if you're, if you're his daughter, you're my friend. And so it's, it's worked out. She's done a great job. She's really looked after the community in her district, and it's been a real honor to serve. I'd like to see, any other commissioners would like to weigh in before she makes some remarks? Commissioner Lindley?
Oh, here we are. Well, it has been an extraordinary journey with you for eight years, and I think I might have been early on one of your best supporters through my work as an editorial page editor, supporting your early candidacy too. And it's just been a real pleasure to work with you. You're our real brain trust here, and thank you so much for all you've done. Congratulations.
Any other commissioners want to weigh in on Commissioner Dozier and Commissioner Maddox?
Classmates, LT 27. What I appreciate most about you, Kristen, is your thoroughness and the professionalism you bring to the job. As long as you're here at this commission, I know that we will cover every base, we will cross every T and dot every I. And that's the way it's supposed to be. That's the way it's supposed to be. Whether for better or for worse, I know we will cover all the details, and everything will be thought of. I appreciate also the way that you push us as individual commissioners to be our best too, because while you're up there being as detailed as you are, it makes us dig deeper into the details as well and brings out a lot of things that makes us the great commission that we are. So continue to push, continue to do what you do, and be who you are for this commission. Really appreciate you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Miner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Maddox was looking at my talking points right here. He said basically everything that I was going to say. Commissioner Dozier, I've known you since your time at Sustainable Tallahassee, and I knew then how thorough and well-read you were on the issues. And as Commissioner Maddox had said, I mean, you, you really bring this board to delve further and further into the details and the crux of some of these complex issues that we have to deal with, and I'm very grateful for that. And as, as he said, I want you to keep on pushing, please. Thank you very much.
All right, Commissioner Jackson.
Yes, Commissioner Dozier. 10 years in this job is like the equivalent of 30 in any other job, so congratulations on that. And secondly, I think I'm most proud not only of your preparation, but the youth internship program that you have established and would not let, let die on the post, even during the pandemic. Look forward to us actually having interns again in real life one day. Your leadership is unquestioned, and our county is lucky to have you. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Proctor, if you want to weigh in?
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. With 10 years, you've heard me say, I'm just trying to get a indoor toilet for the fairground. And if it take us the next 10 years to get an indoor bathroom at the fairground, walk with me. Please walk with me.
With that, would you like to make a few comments?
Thank you so much. So I am first up today, and for everyone watching and everyone in the room, this is going to be probably an hour filled with remembrances and compliments for the incredible work of this board. I am so honored and proud to have served with all of you, some of you for 10 years, three of you, and the rest of you for different amounts of time, and it is truly a collaborative project that we have to serve the residents of our community. I hear you. I get into the weeds, I know I do, and our different ways of approaching this job creates better policy, creates better perspective on this community, and I learn from each of you. So thank you very much for that, and it is with a little bit of sadness that we say goodbye to two of our members today, and it has been an exceptional honor to serve with those of you. Thank you.
And now, if I could ask the sharpest dressed guy in the room to come down. Commissioner Maddox, come on down. And while he's coming down, I will tell you, Commissioner Maddox has continued to surpass all of my expectations when he came onboard. We knew each other peripherally before, but he has been a rock star and a huge addition to the board, and it's been an honor to serve with you. So I can't say enough. Commissioner Proctor, before we put him on the stage here, would you like to say a few words? And it can't be about bathrooms.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Maddox, I've watched you soar and soar and soar. And what I just can't reconcile today is that, you know, you always set that, that high standard, and I always have to think about you because I have to think about what you're going to wear up here. And I don't want to be that many steps behind you. But, you know, today is just the ultimate, because as you're reflecting that, that purple beautiful shirt, but you've gone all the way to heaven with that, and you have this beautiful purple Bible. So your influence, I can see some things. Your influence is very impactful from earth to heaven, and I'm looking forward to 10 more years with you. Thank you.
Commissioner Lindley?
You know, they say, I'm sure it's not true, that a lot of people get in elected office and their ego takes over, right? But not with Nick. He has been, I remember right from the very beginning, and I use football metaphors very lightly because, for obvious reasons, but you were always a kind of coach and team leader. You always have wanted to make us look good as a team, and for just any number of occasions, you have kind of had the softer comment to sort of bring things back to center, and I really have just so often noticed that and appreciate. That's a great quality in a human being and an extraordinary column and quality in a public official, and I thank you for that, and I will always treasure our time here together. Look forward to seeing you around. Thank you.
Commissioner Lindley? I'm sorry, Dozier, I'm whipping around here.
It's Plexiglas, that's it. Commissioner Maddox, as you said, we started this journey getting to know each other in Leadership Tallahassee. I think our class is the only one to have two people running for office in our year, and we were both successful. And it was striking to read the article yesterday and to see the last time we had two commissioners join the board at the same time was 10 years ago, when we joined, and that was a remarkable night for both of us. You are a family man. Your beautiful wife, Tina, your three children, we've seen them grow up in the last 10 years, and that is a joy. And you, your dedication to your family and to your service is something I'm very grateful for. But in thinking about today, I was reminded of actually a candidate's forum, I think it was Human Service Candidates Forum, and my mother, being friends with your opponent in that race for a long time, she came out of that forum and said, wow, he's really special. And it was because you drew on your experience, your growing up, and to really recognize all members of our community and those that are on hard times and making sure that they're present in our mind at all points. You've stayed with that for 10 years and truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Commissioner Jackson?
Commissioner Maddox, my chairman, who at my first vice chair meeting stepped out and said, you need to run things for a little bit, I have to take this call, and it was baptism by fire, even though it was only three minutes. But I did learn, I do want to express my gratitude for the way that you led during my vice chairmanship, and I learned a whole lot from watching you as far as preparation and being prepared for our commission meetings. I'm most proud of the work you do as it relates to affordable housing, but I think that Kristen Dozier did a fine job of summing up, you are a committed family man, and the work that you do with your family is an example that we all should, should strive to follow. So thank you for your great leadership. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Miner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Maddox, I don't think you know this, but I've been watching and learning from you since I got here. My first year after installation was watching you serve as chair of this board, and you did an incredible job, and just seeing that, that pace and the order that you kept things going on was really commendable. And then I also saw you at the Florida Association of Counties and the leadership you provided with that organization. So I mean, I've been, try not to have you catch me looking at you, but I've been watching you and learning quite a bit from you over these last two years, and very grateful to have you part of this board, and very proud to be working with you.
Honored to serve with you. 10 years, nice going. Would you like to make a few comments?
First thing is, all, all I ever wanted to be was a part of the team. That's it. And the team has changed over time, over the past 10 years, but I can say the nucleus of this commission has always made me feel just like that. This will be the first time that Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Partner, and myself will be able to say that there's a majority of new commissioners from when we first started. And what I hope for moving forward is that those, those new commissioners that come on recognize that we are a team and that we have to be able to work together and understand each other, and even when we don't agree, agree in a way that we respect one another. So to the county administrator, our new county attorney, it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you. Chastity, you have been an absolute rock star since you've jumped on the scene for Herb. I miss Herb, but you are doing a magnificent job of being our county attorney. To the county team, the county staff that does all the hard work and makes us look good, we appreciate you. I appreciate you. And I know that late nights when I'm at home and I'm sleeping and thinking about what we're going to talk about the next day at the commission meeting, those are the guys that are out working hard. Those are the guys that are out making it happen for our community. Those are the guys that, those are the guys that are out there covering the potholes and going to get the trash and all the things that we take for granted that make Leon County the special place that we are, and so I want to say a thank you to them as well. I look forward to serving with you guys on the dais and the new commissioners coming in, and I'm going to miss Commissioner Dozier, Commissioner Lindley. Commissioner Lindley is especially because while Commissioner Dozier, you might have been one of our favorite people during campaign time, I caught a little flack, but it helped me grow as a, as a man, to learn how to take, I like to call it constructive criticism, and turn it into a virtue for yourself. I'll never forget that. I'll always remember that. And for that, as you walk off today, I ask that you take with you my tenure pen as a remembrance of the time that we served together and the person that you've been for me, not just in these eight years, but the 10 years that I've been the county commissioner. Thank you.
Okay. Now, it is my great pleasure to recognize, I guess I'm on the right spot here? Yeah. Make sure I've got. Okay. Commissioner Lindley, I will start this, and then we will kind of work our way around the room, but before I start, I want to present to you a framed Canopy Road photo on behalf of the county and your colleagues at the board, and it recognizes your time with the county, and it's a, it says, Mary Ann Lindley, at large, Leon County Commissioner, seat 1, 2012 to 2020. And I'll just hold it here, I'm going to bring it all the way around for now. But I would just like to say, in my remarks, let me get into this a little bit. You, I guess we can do this while we sit down. You have been a rock star since you have arrived, and it will be nice to be on the other side of the fence with you in public, in the private sector. I remember when you first started, your experience, you knew all the issues, you came in knowledgeable, you understood at least conceptually what was going on in our community, which was a real asset. You write spectacularly, and I am always in awe of the way you could respond to some of the critics that we had and some of the things we had, and I will forever be in your fan club and appreciate everything that you've done for us, and it's been an honor to serve with you. So I guess Vince, you want me to hand it off to you here?
Sure, I'm on here. Commissioner Lindley, I know you've made a lot of grown men cry in your time, but I'm going to try to, try to keep it together, and so I'm going to make it brief. So on behalf of all the men and women of Leon County Government, Commissioner Lindley, we have a small token of appreciation for you. You saw your tribute recently in the county newsletter, and we knew you liked it, and so we also knew that you and Charlie were planning a home expansion. Charlie, did you know that? And because of that, we wanted to take up a whole wall, and so we're going to present this to you. Because we don't want you to forget about us, Commissioner Lindley, and we're not going to forget about you and all of your contributions, and really just what an absolute pleasure it's been working with you for the past eight years. But we're not letting you go that easy, so we wanted to show just a short video that we compiled in your honor. Matt? All right, let's hear it for Commissioner Lindley. Commissioner Lindley, again, on behalf of all the men and women of Leon County Government, we are going to miss you so much, and we are truly grateful for having you. Charlie, thank you. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you. Madam County Attorney, would you like to weigh in? I'm just going to run, run the table here if that's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Lindley, it's been an honor and a pleasure. I'm only sad that I got to work with you for such a short period of time, but I look forward to keeping in touch and continuing to grow our friendship. Thank you.
Commissioner Miner?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Lindley, you've brought wisdom, thoughtfulness, and a midwestern small-town politeness that has really elevated the entire county commission. Your decades as an award-winning journalist really gave you some valuable skills here on the county commission. You're able to thoroughly analyze a complex problem, get to the heart of it, and then evaluate the possible outcomes. You really study the issues, and, and that's very evident from your career before you got here. Six years ago, you led an initiative called Leon Works to help young people obtain job skills for the new economy, and in my opinion, this is one of your most profound legacies. There are people in this county that are now, having obtained job skills, are now working in the job they love because of Leon Works. They may not know who Commissioner Mary Ann Lindley is, but they are better off with their careers and moving into a great direction because of you and this board's work on Leon Works. You were a big part of that, and that's a legacy that, when I, when I think about your time here, I think of that as a lasting positive contribution that you've brought to not just this commission, but to the entire county. I just said this a few minutes ago to you, a couple of years ago, I tried to convince you to run for another term on the county commission, and that's no offense to the new person that's joining us. I'm very excited for that person coming, but it is very bittersweet, because I really will be sad of you, with you leaving. I just want to thank you for your service. I truly will miss working with you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think every, for the past five meetings, I've let my affections for you show. It's been, it's been, again, a pleasure to serve with you. I think, again, if I give any more compliments, the biggest attribute or legacy that you'll leave is your decision, even when, when you're on top of your game to walk away. Most athletes do that, most politicians do that. They stay over and over again until they start to decline, and then they decide to walk away when they're forced out the door. You leave with grace, with a legacy that you left behind, with people that love you and so may have so many nice things to say about you, but you leave the office in good hands with Commissioner-elect Cummings. And last thing I'll say is that one thing we can always count on, and with you and with this commission, is to take on those hard issues and make them, and push forward a decision that may not necessarily be popular, just going to, the decision's going to pack the chambers like the gun show loophole issue, but that you believed in most and that you knew that was the right thing to do, to do for this community, and that you knew that we will follow you on. I've always appreciated that about you, and I'm going to miss that about you. And so, as you ride off into the sunset, because I don't, you know, most times we say that we have an informed citizen that'll be by here every time they get a chance to, but I truly believe that at this, at this, this, this stage of your life, that you're really going to start to spend time with your husband and family and really, really, not forget about us, but do a lot of other things besides spending time, spending time in this chamber. As you do that, I hope, I hope that you enjoy that more than you have enjoyed the time that you spend with us, but know that you've left it in good hands and a legacy for us all to follow as county commissioners and as elected officials. Thank you.
Commissioner Jackson?
Commissioner Lindley, as all of you may or may not know, of course, it's public record, but you can always count on Commissioner Lindley to respond to the tough questions from a constituent in writing, and I'm sure that's from 42 years of work in journalism. But just this week, probably the highest compliment I received was my response that I had sent to someone that was concerned about our, the decision to hold the cross-country meet here in Leon County, and you complimented me on my response, and it was as if the skies opened up and Shakespeare shook my hand. But I did, I, I was excited about that. Around my house, my wife knows you as her favorite county commissioner and her, her book club pal, and I'm sure that we will continue to have those exchanges that take place going forward. Some pioneer achievements, you and Commissioner Dozier, I believe in 2013, served as the first ever woman to chair and vice chair in this county commission. Am I correct on the year? Maybe. Great achievement. Served on the press corps for the state legislature when there were only three women allowed to serve or to cover the legislature here in Tallahassee. And now you get to sail off into the sunset with to move quickly into the chambers and certainly have educated me and reminded me often not to bury the lead and I will do my best to aspire to that. You are always a champion for the good and always have a snappy quip for those who might go a little astray and that is appreciated whether in email or on the dais. As you said a few minutes ago before you joined the commission, Mary Ann Lindley was one of those women in my life. Women who are part of the conversation, who lead the conversation, our community, women with respect for their leadership and their quick wit, again, and their style. And yes, we have been connected since I was in high school in 92 and we've talked a lot over the years. We've told the story of an editorial you wrote about something I did at Sale High School focused on Women's History Month, but I don't think I've ever shared with you, I'm gonna pass this around our plexiglass there. This is an original note that I saved since March 16th, 1992, that Mary Ann Lindley wrote me. It's on Tallahassee Democrat Letterhead. And it said, "Kristen, I hope I get to meet you someday because you are obviously an exceptional young woman. I am proud of you and I think you won a round with the bureaucracy and its wooden-headed ones. Not an easy thing to do. Thanks for lending us the picture. It's great. Sincerely, Mary Ann Lindley." I think this tone, this, your ability to champion young people particularly continues with Leon Works and so much of what you do on this commission, champion all people in our community. I'm keeping the original, I gave you a copy. Yes, I'm keeping the original. And I, I just so very much appreciate you for all you've done for our community and particularly getting to know you in the last eight years. We are indeed going to miss you when you're gone, but not too far. I'm also excited for you in the next chapter and spending time with Charlie, who is a fan favorite. I mean, y'all gotta come back for the parades because the kids, Charlie, they just love having you there. Mary Ann too, but particularly you. Spend time with your granddaughter and your family. And I have to also admit that I'm really glad that we won't be under Sunshine rules anymore and we can talk about anything. So there we go, I'm looking forward to that. Congratulations, thank you for your service and it's been an honor.
Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Everyone is pretty aware that in life's journey, the experience of getting to walk a distance with people and getting to know them is always one of the richer rewards. And to anyone who has any doubt about it, Mayor Daley will tell you that it ain't an elected official who does not know who the editor of the editorial page is, trust and believe. So, there are a lot of constituents whose names we don't always remember, but all of us know who the newspaper personnel, we know them and we watch them and we pay attention because they get to write a narrative about each of us as they see. So, I was very clear on your, several of your thoughts about me as a writer and I'm just glad that I've gotten to see something a little softer, tender, meek, and mild about you. And this journey and walking together the last eight years and our minds synchronizing to come to decision in the interest of our county has been remarkable and it adds to my growth and I thank you for that. I would believe now that you've set on this side of the public dais, that you're probably more ripe and seasoned to be an exquisite writer, having experienced the eagle's eye of the editorial room and to have actually served and to have weighed within the balances of public decision-making policies. I just hope that you could do it for two more years and go back with the pen because I think that your view would be a lot more incredible. So, thank you for sharing with us and I concur that as long as I'm here, that I'm gonna do all I can to make sure that Leon Works actually works. So, thank you very much.
Commissioner Lindley, the floor is yours.
Well, this has been almost unbearably sweet and dear and precious and you all know I have a dark side, right? We haven't mentioned that here. But I'm absolutely flabbergasted, it's just been such an honor, such a privilege. I, all the things that have come forth today, including that array of pictures, I didn't know I'd been stocked all these years, Matt, just went to it. But unforgettable privilege, I have loved the way we have all been really friends as well as colleagues. I think this sets a tone that the whole country should see and emulate and it's not been easy every time and we've all probably gone home at night thinking, "What was so-and-so thinking?", you know? We know, we've had our stresses and our disagreements, but just great respect, we have an enormously talented professional staff and team throughout our whole Leon County government that I think the citizens here have no idea how blessed they are, how first-rate this is, how dedicated to public, true public service, the service to the public. I mean, it's, I love, from time to time, I've seen some of Vince's letters to somebody else and he signs it "In Service, In Service." And it's just such a simple but really eloquent and meaningful way of expressing what we're all doing here, what our government is meant to be doing as elected officials. It's really a noble calling and I know that you all are gonna carry on this with just great intellect and character and heart and I really congratulate our new commissioners who are coming in. You all are gonna have a great time here, it's gonna be the experience of a lifetime. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Debbie Craig, who has been for five years holding our office together. She has been such a trooper, I'm sure she had no idea when she took this job, that she was gonna basically be in the game 24/7. Weekends, holidays, when she thinks she's taking a day off, the world calls, it does to all of us now, all the time. It's not a job, it's a way of life and what a great way of life. And Debbie, thank you for just being so wonderful, really just a great voice for our office and for our county and I thank you for that sincerely. And for everybody here, Vince and Alan, YouTube cut-ups, you know, I go in my briefings and we laugh for the first half hour and then we settle down to the business at hand. And Alan and I, he always reminds me of one of my first briefings and Carolyn and Brian, you can just take this for what it's worth, but I told him, I looked at the 32 items on the agenda and I said, "You know, I really am just paying attention to the ones I'm interested in." And he said, he kind of held me to that for many years, but I do think there is a kind of dynamic that if all of us collectively pay attention to the ones we're interested in, there's some kind of magic, we're all interested in something and together we really are able to, to rise, to raise up the issues that matter most. And so, you know, the whole I leave, the things I'm interested in will be filled by Brian and Carolyn, who I'll begin calling Commissioner in a little while. But for now, thank you for everything, it was just overwhelming. Thank you so much, it's been a real pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, point of personal privilege before we hand the gavel off here, I'd like to recognize Mayor Daley who's here in the audience. Mayor Daley, thank you for joining us. I think I saw ex-Commissioner Manny Joannis in the halls earlier, but I don't see him here now, so he was here earlier. So, I'm now going to hand the gavel off to Vice Chairman, Commissioner Miner, and I will turn it over to you, your large and in charge. Take it away.
Thank you, Chairman Deluge, and thank you for all you've done as chairman. I want to begin my remarks by saying what a privilege it's been to serve as your vice chairman. Undoubtedly, the past year's been filled with unexpected challenges to families as well as businesses and other organizations, but as chairman of this commission and alongside our administrator and attorney, you have provided strong leadership to help navigate the public health challenges of the Corona's, coronavirus pandemic and provided guidance by issuing one of the state's first safer-at-home orders to keep citizens safe during the pandemic, issuing a county-wide mask mandate to drive down transmission and stop the spread, and approving a balanced budget that kept the mileage rates unchanged for a ninth straight year, all while chairing the county's first of many virtual meetings. You know, I first noticed your leadership in 2008, 2009 during the Great Recession. And during that time, as a citizen, I saw you be the driver of the shovel-ready projects to take full advantage of the federal economic stimulus funds. And I saw that and thought, you know, Commissioner Deluge are on different sides of the aisle, but I really have a tremendous amount of respect for the leadership skills and the professionalism that you bring to this board. And it's been, it's been an honor to see you in your service to this county, it's been an even greater honor to work with you over these last two years and then serve as your vice chair for the last year. So it's been very, I won't forget it, sir, I won't forget it. One thing I want to do is, I wanna, this, I want to present this gift to you which recognizes the past year, but I also want to acknowledge your 14 years of service to this county and to the citizens of District 4. Tonight may be our last meeting with you on the dais, but I know that you have left a legacy in that seat. I can say that as a new commissioner, I've learned a lot from you and I know how much public service really drives you. You will be missed, but I know that there's another rich chapter in front of you. So I want to go ahead and present to you this honorary gavel for your time as chair.
Thank you. You're welcome. Do I get to use this at home?
Yeah, use the whole thing, it's attached. And then, also want to present to you this framed photo, looks a little similar to the one you just gave to Mary Ann Lindley. There's a template here. This framed photo recognizes your 14 years of service to Leon County and should serve as a great reminder for the community you have helped engage, build, and improve. On behalf of the citizens of Leon County, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
I would now like to recognize our county administrator for remarks and then I will ask the other commissioners and the county attorney to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioners, as you all know, each year, it's been a tradition around here that we present to our chairman a collage that tries to capture so much of what happened during your chairmanship. We know some of it you'd like to forget, Mr. Chairman, but I would like to, again, on behalf of all the men and women of Leon County Government, your collage from this year, it, Commissioners, as you all know, and as everybody knows, that this is truly an unprecedented year and again, it captures so much of that, but it also captures a lot of the good stuff because the work and service to the community never stopped. And so, Commissioner, we, the collage that we're presenting to you, again, is our small token of thanks to you for your 14 years of service. Commissioner Deluge, it's been a privilege for me and I know all of the men and women of Leon County to work with you through the tough times and there's been a lot of them over the years. There's been more, thankfully, rewarding times and rewarding moments and also a few fun times in between. And so, like Commissioner Lindley, we just couldn't resist the temptation to capture a few of those moments in video here. So, if you'd allow, Matt?
You want me to do it here?
Yeah.
Okay. Seriously, Lindley. Let me tell you how serious we are here in Florida. Serious is like my middle name.
Hey, what are you doing? Mr. Chairman, again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Commissioner Deluge, on behalf of all the men and women of Leon County Government, we are grateful to your service and we're gonna miss you. Don't forget about your family here at Leon County, I know you won't. Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Madam County Attorney, we'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Deluge, it's been my honor and a pleasure. We had to work very closely together this year during the pandemic and I can say that you always acted with humor and grace in those difficult times and it was my pleasure to help you in any way that I could. Thank you.
Madam County Attorney. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Deluge doesn't know this, but upon becoming a county commissioner, Commissioner Deluge gave me my, I guess, my locker room intro into politics. It was our first, it was our first budget workshop and I came in here and said my piece and did a pretty good job and as I was walking back to my office, Commissioner Deluge pulled me aside, he said, "Man, that was impressive, I thought you was just a jock." I said, "Okay, I said, "This is the way this is gonna go, okay." But, you know, Commissioner Deluge has been one of those guys that I could, I could look to, to show me how to lead. He's actually led at every level of county leadership that you could actually lead at, from leading our commission, to leading our statewide commission organization with FAC, to leading our national commission organization at NACO. You can't get any more into what leadership means to a person and what it looks like than what Brian Deluge has provided for us. He's led us through hurricanes, a pandemic, and some pretty other rough times as a commissioner and I want to let you know I appreciate you. You've been an example that I've chosen to look at when it comes to leadership. I would, I would tell you all that my inspiration for even running to be FAC president was Brian Deluge. I got to see him do it, I got to watch him operate, I got to see him interact with other commissioners and I said, "You know what? I want to do that, I want to be that." And that's what, that's what you're supposed to be for your colleagues and for, for those...
Mr. Chairman, again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Commissioner Deluge, on behalf of all the men and women of Leon County government, we are grateful to your service, and we're going to miss you. Don't forget about your family here at Leon County. I know you won't. Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Madam County Attorney, we'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Deluge, it's been my honor and a pleasure. We had to work very closely together this year during the pandemic, and I can say that you always acted with humor and grace in those difficult times, and it was my pleasure to help you in any way that I could. Thank you.
Madam County Attorney. Mr. Maddox.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioner Deluge doesn't know this, but upon becoming a county commissioner, Commissioner Deluge gave me my, I guess, my locker room intro into politics. It was our first, it was our first budget workshop, and I came in here and said my piece and did a pretty good job. And as I was walking back to my office, Commissioner Deluge pulled me aside and said, "Man, that was impressive. I thought you were just a jock." I said, "Okay." I said, "Okay, this is the way this is going to go, okay." But, you know, Commissioner Deluge has been one of those guys that I could look to, to show me how to lead. He's actually led at every level of county leadership that you could actually lead at, from leading our commission to leading our statewide commission organization with FAC to leading our national commission organization at NACO. You can't get any more into what leadership means to a person and what it looks like than what Brian Deluge has provided for us. He's led us through hurricanes, a pandemic, and some pretty other rough times as a commissioner. And I want to let you know I appreciate you. You've been an example that I've chosen to look at when it comes to leadership. I would tell you all that my inspiration for even running to be FAC president was Brian Deluge. I got to see him do it. I got to watch him operate. I got to see him interact with other commissioners, and I said, "You know what? I want to do that. I want to be that." And that's what you're supposed to be for your colleagues and for those who come in after you, is that kind of example. And so I appreciate that. And as you go climb mountains and everything else that you plan to do from here on out, just know that we'll miss you, and we'll look for you to be involved. We'll be calling you and seeking your advice on things within Leon County. But we appreciate the 14 years that you've served as our District Four County Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Jackson.
Commissioner Deluge, 29 or 30 name storms, a pandemic, a curfew for, a pandemic, a curfew for civil unrest, curfew, snafus, all of those things that you dealt with in a most difficult year as chairman. I'm sure glad it held off for one year until I could step down. However, you've done it, as both of, or several of the colleagues have said, with style and grace and a great leadership. I think that it says a lot about your leadership when you read the words of your foes rather than your fans. Will Messer quoted that regardless of where you ended up on an issue, you always felt that Commissioner Deluge listened, addressed your concerns, and was fair and cared about doing the right thing. Those are kind words from someone that, at that time, I think set a record for fundraising for a county commission seat here in Leon County. Thank you for your leadership, your very presence here today, and your ability to lead this meeting makes me humbly grateful for your effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Deluge, Brian, as you said, you were one of those who was friends with, of the established business community, friends with my father, friends with family, and we got to know each other a little bit before I joined the commission. And I am so grateful that we've had the last 10 years to work together, to serve together, but also to talk about our families together. And I truly appreciate that time that we've had just to touch base and to talk about our families. As I reflected on today, I certainly hope you know how much the whole community appreciates your dedication of public service. But also, I particularly appreciate the dedication to your family. I know some of them are here today. That is beyond question. I want to wish you happy birthday, too. I'm not sure if we were supposed to say that, but this is quite the day for you. So one more trip around the sun, and it has been and will continue to be an amazing adventure. We may not always agree, and this year, as others have reflected, has been particularly difficult, and I appreciate your leadership of this board through this difficult time. The two other things that occurred to me, one was an op-ed that I think you wrote before I joined the commission about the importance of civil servants, of public employees, and how you reflected on that before you joined the commission and after. And you have not missed a beat in my 10 years, but certainly in your 14, to celebrate the incredible civil servants we have working for Leon County of all counties in the state and across the nation, and that is very important. And I thank you for that. Mostly what came to mind, I found the note from Mary Ann for you. I'm just looking through all these pictures and reflecting on how many silly, incredible costumes we got into for literacy volunteers. You were mostly in drag. It may have been eight years we were together for Reader's Theater, and you always did it with incredible amount of humor and understanding of, you know, how much people had fun with those crazy get-ups, and you were a great team leader for us. For me personally, you were my coach going over the edge. We repelled 10 stories down the Doubletree, and I've done it once without you, and I will never do it again. You got me over the edge, and your encouragement, whether it's on an individual basis like that, and really letting us know we can do anything, accomplish anything, was true in that moment, but it's true in your service to the county, to all counties in Florida, and, as others have said, through National Association of Counties. The, I'm really glad I did have the juggling picture in mind as well, so I'm glad you used that, as county administrator. The adventures will continue. I have no doubt we will hear from you, but I also wish for you a lot more mountains to climb, a lot more lakes to paddle, a lot more miles to bike, and thank you. Enjoy it. You deserve it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Happy birthday, Brian.
Thank you.
Kind of nice to just bask in all of these nice compliments as a birthday gift from all of us. We've known each other quite some time. We've served together eight years, but I remember having coffee with you and talking over county issues long before that, too. I remember the first, I guess, maybe not the first, but when I was at a national conference in Washington, and there you were up on that stage as the president of the National Association of County Commissions, probably 3,000 or 4,000 people from around the country who are in offices just like we are. And you were leading the way and talking about the things that we do here in Leon County that have set the tone. I mean, it was your attitude, your style, your experience. It's pretty extraordinary, and the qualities that you brought to leading our national organization to try to elevate all the members there in many of the ways that you have elevated us, and I think one of them is above all your civility. I have never, ever heard you not be utterly courteous and respectful to people who are, you know, deeply involved in issues that trouble them and worry them, and there have been a lot of them this year as you've been president, or been chairman of both our commission and our blueprint board, too. So, you know, I just admire you enormously, learn from you, and just I know you're going to have a great life, not worried about anything that happens later, except I hope you don't fall off a mountain and we have to, you know, come rescue you somehow. But thank you for this time together, and congratulations on your birthday.
Thank you.
See you around.
Thank you, Commissioner Lindley. Commissioner Proctor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I walked in this afternoon, and Brian Deluge and Kirsten Dozier, and I saw Mayor Daley, and I said, "Damn, the three Ds are back together." And people, y'all need to know, I've been run over by the three Ds so many times, and they just relish running over me. And I thought that Nick Maddox thought that his last name ended with a D, and that he was Daddox. And it's just been a tremendous moment to see the recompening of those Ds, and when they came together, it's just amazing how, it was like watching the Green Bay Packers on a sweet right, sweet left, you know, all harrowing. Brian, let me just say this, man. You is the most decorated county commissioner in the history of Leon County and possibly in the state of Florida. You've served twice as the president of the Florida Association of Counties. You've been the national president of 3,061 counties, I believe. Nobody has those credentials in our city, our county. It's awesome. And I don't know if you know the story of how the eagle builds her nest and how, over time, the nest becomes uncomfortable as the weight of the baby eagle increases. And as that bird grows, that eaglet grows and increases in weight, it manages to, or the nest, to deteriorate a little further. And at the bottom of that nest, there's a lot of things uncomfortable, like cans and glass and sticky stuff and thorns, and it gets to a point where that large eagle has outrun the nest and eventually, through the discomfort, leaves. I want to tell you that it's almost a mirage to see you, as Mary Ann said, and for us to see you on the national stage. It's very clear to me that, I hope that it's clear to you, that Florida has more red counties than blue. And outside of Leon and Gaston and possibly Jefferson, this state is red. Can't you see it? And sometimes, when, and if you can handle being a national president of 3,061 counties, that's the same number that Joe Biden would be the president over, the exact same number. So see your skill sets, your capacity to meet, greet, effectuate policy at that level. You've already demonstrated all you really need to know about yourself. So I have followed you in all of your capacities of leadership, California, Washington, across the state, as a collegial supporter to one of my colleagues here serving. But you would be badly mistaken if you think that our small little nest, which you largely have outgrown, is the last stop. I hope you remember that. Good luck. God bless.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Now, everyone, would you please join me in honoring and saying farewell to both Commissioner Lindley and Commissioner Deluge? I would now like to recognize Judge Hurstrom to conduct the installation of newly elected commissioners.
On behalf of the five Leon County and 16 circuit judges serving the people of this community, it is my privilege at this time to administer the oath of office. I call upon District Two Commissioner Jimbo Jackson to take the oath of office with witnesses and family. All right, sir. If you would, place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand. How's that, Matt? You know, Slayden would have put little footprints on the floor showing us where to stand. I just wanted to. If you would, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
I am duly qualified to hold office.
I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
I will well and faithfully perform.
I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of county commissioner.
The duties of the office of county commissioner.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You weren't supposed to hurry off. I was going to recognize, you know, I want to humbly thank the citizens of District Two, but more importantly, I have the real heroes as part of my team. This is not so much about me as the people that support me every day. My wife, Beth, who was the number one door knocker and campaigner during the entire campaign. I thank you eternally. Our son, Drew, you got to stand up and wave, Drew. My daughter, Ally. My granddaughter, Addison Jane Rutherford. Addison Jane, wait. And fresh off of less than 24 hours of her returning from a chemo treatment for breast cancer is my 30-year-old daughter, Ashley Rutherford, who is a hero to me, and I hope to one day live up to the example that her and her sister have set, to be resilient warriors despite life circumstances. I'm so proud of both of them and Beth for the support that they provide to me daily. Thank you.
At this time, I call upon District Four Commissioner-elect Brian Welch to take the oath of office with your family and witnesses. All righty. So y'all get gathered around looking in a photogenic way, I'm sure. Outstanding. Would you please put your left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand, and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
I am duly qualified to hold office.
I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
I will well and faithfully perform.
I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of county commissioner.
The duties of the office of county commissioner.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you. Can I say a few things? Well, thank y'all very much for that. This is my wife, Kim, my daughter Cameron, my daughter Chloe, and my son, Carter. I apologize. I don't deserve them. Phew. Sorry. I cried at my wedding constant, the entire time. Thank you to the residents of, the voters of District Four for giving me this incredible opportunity to serve you. I'm humbled and grateful, and I recognize the gravity of the trust you have put in me, and I couldn't do this without my family and without all of the supporters who have lent me their trust and affirmed that trust in me. So thank you, and I will, I will do my very best to represent your interests before this body. So thank you.
The crying is the best part, really. Thank you so much, Commissioner Welch. Congratulations. At this time, I call upon at-large Commissioner-elect Carolyn Cummings to take the oath of office with your family and your witnesses. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right. Left hand on the book. There we go. Would you raise your, oh, sorry about that. I didn't mean to rush you. Sorry about that. Would you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
I am duly qualified.
I am duly qualified.
To hold office under the Constitution.
To hold office under the Constitution.
I will well and faithfully perform.
I will well and faithfully perform.
The duties of the office of county commissioner.
The duties of the office of county commissioner.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
To Chief Judge Systrom and all of the elected officials here, thank you very much. I am certainly honored to be elected as your at-large county commissioner, seat one. I'm grateful to all the voters. I'm grateful to God for all the confidence that you have placed in me by your vote, and I certainly pledge to do my very best to represent all of the citizens of Leon County. Thank you very much.
Outstanding.
I apologize. I'd like to acknowledge my family that's here. This is my sister. This is her son, my nephew. This is my adopted sister by another mother, and this is my nephew's girlfriend, and I just feel honored that my mother... And I just feel honored that my mother is 95 years old. She is living, but because of the pandemic, we decided not to bring her up here today. Thank you very much.
Beautiful. You may take your seat with your colleagues. At this time, I call upon the Honorable Gwen Marshall, my partner in the court system for the reorganization of the board ceremony. Clerk Marshall.
And the honor to conduct the 2020, 2021 Chairman and Vice Chairman, uh, reorganization of the board. Uh, but if I may, uh, make a few brief remarks. Um, I would be remiss if I do not thank the county for, and the commission and their staff for their leadership during this pandemic. Um, wearing the mask campaign, I think, has been very successful. It may not have been popular, but you did what was right for our community. And also, I would like to thank you on behalf of my office for providing the funding that we needed to get through this pandemic. Um, the, I was able to equip my office for, with PPE. So, uh, when the courthouse reopened, we'll be prepared to serve our citizens adequately. So again, I would be remiss if I don't thank the ki- commission and staff, uh, for their leadership during this difficult time. And also, um, I would, last comment I would like to, uh, make, Commissioner Maddox, I want to congratulate you and your fraternity, Omega, on y'all 100th Founder's Day celebration. I think it's today. And now I'm gonna pray that my husband is not listening. But, but congratulations to you and your fraternity on your Founder's Day today. Uh, with no further ado, I will start, I will call for nominations for Chairman, um, to the, um, Board for the 2020-2021. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Rick Minor, Chairman.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, we're gonna move on to the, um, nominations for Vice Chair, uh, call for nominations for Vice Chair. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Bill Proctor for Vice Chair.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none. Um, oh, all in favor, say aye. Oh, we already went through that. I'm sorry. Okay, um, all right, moving on. Um, at this time, I would ask that the new Chairman, Commissioner Minor, let me make sure I get this right. Would you join me at the lectern as well with your, um, family or whoever you have here with you today? Matthew, do you have the tablet?
Clerk, excuse me. There you go.
Would you place your hand, raise your right hand, place it on the Bible? Okay, repeat after me. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will well.
That I will well.
And faithfully execute.
And faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Chairman.
Of Chairman.
Of the Leon County.
Of the Leon County.
Board of County Commissioners.
Board of County Commissioners.
To my best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, your Honorable Chair.
Thank you very much. Um, I don't know if you know exactly how much of a Herculean effort there was to, to time that so that my two-year-old wouldn't have a complete conniption, um, in the, in the chambers, but, uh, it was, uh, miraculous. So I, I owe a great deal of gratitude toward my wife Jessica L. Minor and, uh, my daughter Madeline, who is, uh, six, and Charlotte, who just turned two years old a couple of days ago. Um, they were here for my installation. And Madeline was four years old, and I think the Bible was resting on her head at that time. And, uh, Charlotte was at the ripe old age of five days. Uh, so it's really great to, to have you here. Um, thank you, Commissioners, for your support uh, and for your trust in me as Chairman, uh, of this board. As, as your Chair, I, I see as my job, um, as doing everything I can to help you be successful in serving the people of your districts and throughout the county. I'm committed to doing that. Uh, to the folks who are here today or are watching from home, I used to develop public policy for a living. And so I've seen and assessed what other governments, uh, have done throughout the country. And I can tell you that your Leon County government is among the very best that I've seen. With that in mind, let me say what most everyone is thinking. This will be a very challenging year. Much of it will be focused on protecting lives and protecting livelihoods. And I want to point out that there is no group of people I'd rather be working with in serving this community than the people on this dais and than the other employees of Leon County. You know these people. They are your neighbors, your friends, your fellow churchgoers, and the parents of your kids' classmates. They are talented and dedicated, and like you, they care about and they love this community. We will not stop in working with you to protect the community's health, to revitalize our businesses, and to restore our quality of life. The next few months will be a challenge, but this will be a year of regrowth and rebuilding. We are all in this together, and together we will persevere. Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to take a short recess to allow the county team to clean and sanitize the areas as we move seats. Um, just as a reminder, Commissioners, um, there will not be a reception, and we will not conduct a group photo of the board this year. Um, we will reconvene, uh, at 4:30. Uh, so, uh, and that's about 13 minutes from now because we have a full agenda this evening. Could I get a motion of recess? Is there a second? All right, thank you. The board will recess and reconvene at, uh, 4:30. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Any comments from the other members of the board? Mr. Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And congratulations. Echoing Commissioner Proctor's comments, Ms. County Administrator, you and your staff have done a phenomenal job today, our first meeting back in chambers. And I'm glad to be here to welcome our new colleagues and to thank our outgoing colleagues. I will say that as reorganization meetings go, this is a lot. And Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Welch are walking into a heavy agenda, but particularly a big issue with COVID. And I'm not sure if we may want an update from Claudia Blackburn, our Department of Health Director. Mr. Chair, I would welcome any thoughts that she wants to offer today. But particularly, I think it would be important for us today with this commission to talk about the mask mandate. I've started to receive some comments and seen some postings about people maybe taking down the mask mandate signs or not enforcing the mask mandates inside certain businesses. And there may be some confusion that because the state doesn't have a mask mandate or because the governor eliminated our ability to have enforcement mechanisms for the mandate, that we no longer have one in our community. And yet, it is very much in effect. And I think at least, you know, for the returning commissioners, we have reinforced that at all of our past meetings. So because of the spike in numbers, and I think at this point, it seems like our numbers are going up, maybe not as rapidly as we're seeing in other places, but this has happened consistently through the pandemic, that we may lag behind a surge in other areas, but this is the time to really buckle down and to make sure we're protecting ourselves, protecting each other. And particularly with the CDC guidance reinforcing the use of masks. I just wanted to share those thoughts, Mr. Chair, but really hear from others and see what we might be able to do to continue to reinforce this message.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. I think the points that Commissioner Dozier and Vice Chair Proctor are making are very much on point. One thing I'd like to do is ask Claudia Blackburn from the Leon County Department of Health to provide us with an update, but first, I wanted to see if any other commissioners had some comments or questions. Okay. Christopher Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the comments that have been made thus far are very valid, but I do think we run into a bit of a snafu with the whole enforcement issue when it comes to masks. The things that I've heard in the emails that we've received have been just that, from those who are in opposition of masks. One spoke very clearly to say, "I'm going to teach my son to live with the freedoms that he has as an American, and if he doesn't want to wear his mask, he should not have to wear his mask, and there's nothing that you all can do about it." We can continue to have the mandate in place that we have here, but I think we have to understand that there is a very, 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 very limited square in which we can enforce what we're asking. I think at one point, we had where it was a recommendation more so than a mandate that we move in the way of masks. I think that was when we first started, then we moved to the mandate. And now, it's just like I said, as it sits, people are being somewhat rebellious, and those who don't believe in what we're trying to do, they're being somewhat rebellious and saying that, "Hey, I'm going to wear my mask if I don't want to, because there's absolutely nothing you can do about it." And we lay at the table of our business owners to ask them to enforce within their own establishments what we're trying to do here in enforcing people to wear their masks. I will tell you that from seeing on the canvassing board, there were a few people, as reported back to us as a part of the report from the supervisor, that flat out refused to wear their mask inside of precincts. And what do you do in that situation if you're the supervisor, if you want to prescribe? What the supervisor chose to do was what some business owners are choosing to do, is he let them vote with their mask off. They tried to enforce it, they fought, but at the end of the day, he let them vote. And I think that's what we're beginning to see from the businesses and from the people in Leon County. So I don't know how far we can go in what we're in the mandating part of it, although CDC and everybody else recommends. I don't want to see us go to a level that we can't go lawfully, and I know we won't. I know that's not what we do here, but there are limitations as to what we can do, per Constitution, per the state saying we can't do some things unless we want to sue. And we've seen that happen before, but we have to be cognizant of the fact of that at the bottom line of this, we have people who are just straight out rebelling against what we're attempting to do here. And when we're having the conversation of what we're going to do about it, we have to have that conversation in respect of the limitations that we have on enforcement, as well as liberties those have that we are residing over in Leon County. So I wanted to bring that up as we have this conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. And Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, guys, for giving me the opportunity to participate and serve with you. And I just wanted to sort of echo Commissioner Maddox's sentiments. I think that the enforcement mechanisms are difficult with the mask mandate. I think the county's done a good job of communicating the importance of wearing masks, and I would certainly love to hear from Ms. Blackburn about our local specific situation in terms of spread and things like that. But I think we all agree the masks have had a marked, has had a good result on our local numbers, but I do think the enforcement thing creates a problem, and I would like to have some clarity, if possible, from the commission about what exactly can be done, because I think if we don't, we pit business owners against citizens, and I think that creates a problem. So I would more or less echo Commissioner Maddox's sentiments and just say that we need to continue to encourage folks to wear masks, but we need to acknowledge the reality of our mandate in light of the governor's order.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, Ms. Blackburn, what was the positivity rate last week? The number is not fresh in my mind. The positivity rate for testing last week here in Leon County?
Sir, I'm
From the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Vice Chair Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I want to thank the county administrator, his staff, for throughout this effort, um, the flexibility, the adaptability, uh, their efforts to make the physical, um, uh, amends to this chamber. Uh, we thank them for that. Um, the work that they're doing on the ground, uh, has been, um, astounding. And, um, it's been my response, uh, from the community, uh, deep levels of, of appreciation and so on. And I think that there are few minor, uh, more minor than major, um, uh, reviews that I hope that we can go back into and give, uh, um, citizens a, a second, uh, viewing if possible. Maybe to, um, as we're getting down to the end of the line, uh, that we can give, um, a second hearing to some of those who were not, uh, positively received on the first go around. Uh, that's an ask of, I am making asking the county administrator, uh, for. Secondly, uh, consistent with the comments from the CDC and with the county administrators, share it to us, Mr. Chairman, uh, it's clear that our numbers and the spiking across the nation, it's greater today as we come back and reconvene than when it was when we, uh, we initially, uh, thought that it was wise not to convene. I would ask, um, if the chairman and administrator and other health officials would, uh, possibly reconsider, given the flaring ups that we're having nationwide, uh, if it's not wise for us to continue to, um, um, maintain a virtual meeting for all of our safety. Uh, those are my comments to the report.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, any comments from any other members of the board? Mr. Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, and congratulations. Um, echoing Commissioner Proctor's comments, um, Mr. County Administrator, you and your staff have done a phenomenal job today, our first meeting back in chambers, and I'm glad to be here to welcome our new colleagues and to thank our outgoing colleagues. I, I will say that, um, as reorganization meetings go, this is a lot. And Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Welch, you're walking into a heavy agenda, um, but particularly a, a, a big issue with, um, COVID. And I'm not sure if we, we may want, um, an update from Claudia Blackburn, our Department of Health Director. Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I would welcome any thoughts that she wants to offer today, but particularly, um, I think it would be important for us today with this commission to talk about the mask mandate. Um, I've started to receive some comments and seen some postings about, um, people maybe taking down the mask mandate signs or not enforcing the mask mandates inside certain businesses. And, and there may be some confusion that because the state doesn't have a mask mandate or because the governor, um, eliminated our ability to have enforcement mechanisms for the mandate, that we no longer have one in our community. And yet it is very much in effect. And I think at least, you know, for the, um, returning commissioners, we have reinforced that, um, at all of our past meetings. So because of the spike in numbers, and, um, I think at this point, it seems like our numbers are going up, maybe not as rapidly as we're seeing in other places, but this has happened consistently through the pandemic that we may lag behind a surge in other areas, but this is the time to really buckle down and to make sure we're protecting ourselves, protecting each other. Um, and particularly with the CDC guidance reinforcing the use of masks. I just, um, wanted to share those thoughts, Mr. Chair, but really hear from others and, um, see what we might be able to do, um, to continue to reinforce this message.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Um, I, I think the points that Commissioner Dozier and Vice Chair Proctor are making are very much on point. Um, one thing I'd like to do is ask, um, Claudia Blackburn from the Leon County Department of Health to provide us with an update, but first I wanted to see if any other commissioners had some comments or questions. Okay. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I think the, the comments that have been made thus far are very valid. Uh, but I do think we run into a bit of a snafu with, with the whole enforcement issue when it comes to masks. Uh, the things that I've heard, the emails that we've received have, have been just that. Um, from those who, who are in opposition of masks, uh, one spoke very clearly to say, "I'm going to teach my son to live with the freedoms that he has as, as an American, and if he doesn't want, want to wear his mask, he should not have to wear his mask." And there's nothing that you all can do about it. Um, we can continue to have the, the, the mandate in place that we have here, but I think we have, we have to understand that there is a very, 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 very limited, uh, square in which we can enforce what we're asking. Um, I think at one point we had where it was a recommendation more so than a mandate that we move in the way of masks. I think that was when we first started, then we moved to the mandate. And now it's just, like I said, as it sits, um, people are being somewhat rebellious. And the, and those who don't believe in, in what we're trying to do, they're being somewhat rebellious, rebellious in saying that, hey, I'm, I'm wearing my mask if, if, if I don't want to because there's absolutely nothing you can do about it. And we lay at the, at the, uh, at the, at the table of our, of our business owners to ask them to, uh, to enforce within their own establishments what we've, what we're, what we're trying to do here in enforcing people to wear their masks. I will tell you that from, from my scene on the canvassing board, there were a few people, uh, as reported back to us as a part of the report from the supervisor, that flat out refused to wear their mask inside a precinct. And what do you do in that situation if you're the supervisor, if you want to prescribe? What the supervisor chose to do was what any, well, what some business owners are choosing to do is he let them vote with their mask off. I mean, they tried to enforce it, they fought, but at the end of the day, he let them vote. And I think that's what we're beginning to see, uh, from the businesses and from the people in Leon County. So I, I don't know, I don't know how far we can go in what we're in the, in the mandating part of it, uh, although CDC and everybody else recommends. I don't want to see us, I don't want to see us go to a level that we can't go lawfully. And I know we won't. I know that's not what we do here. But there are limitations as to what we can do, uh, per constitution, per the state saying we can't do some things unless, unless we want to sue. Uh, and we, we've seen that happen before. Uh, but we have to be cognizant of the fact of that we, that the, at the bottom, the bottom, at the bottom line of this, we have people who are just straight out rebelling against what we're attempting to do here. And when we're having the conversation of what we're going to do about it, we have to have that conversation of respect, in respect of the limitations that we have on enforcement as well as our liberties those have that, that we, that we are residing over in Leon County. So I wanted to bring that up, uh, as we have this conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Uh, and Commissioner Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, guys, for giving me the opportunity to, uh, to participate and, uh, and, and serve with you. And I just wanted to, uh, sort of echo Commissioner Maddox's sentiments. I think that the enforcement mechanisms are difficult with the mask mandate. Um, I think the county's done a good job of communicating the importance of wearing masks, and I would certainly love to hear from Ms. Blackburn about our local specific situation in terms of spread and things like that. But, um, I think we, we all agree the masks have had a, a marked, has had a good result on our local numbers. But I do think the enforcement thing creates a problem, and I would like to have some clarity, if possible, from the commission about what exactly can be done, because I think if we don't, we pit business owners against citizens. And I think that, um, and that creates a problem. So, uh, I would, I would more or less echo Commissioner Maddox's sentiments and just say that, uh, we need to continue to encourage folks to wear masks, but we need to acknowledge the, the reality of our mandate in light of the governor's order.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Commissioner Jackson.
Yeah, Ms. Blackburn, what was, um, what was the positivity rate last week? The number is not fresh in my mind. The positivity rate for testing last week here in Leon County?
Sir, um, I, I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear very well, but were you asking me, Commissioner?
The question was, uh, what was the positivity rate? I can't recall the number exactly, for the last seven days or last week in Leon County?
Yes, uh, for the last week, it was 5.02%. So it has hovered right around 5% for the last three weeks.
Right.
And we've been, there's been lots of testing going on, uh, lots of demand at Brad, sometimes 16, 1800 people a day. So there is a lot of testing going on in the community. Uh, and we, we've been stable for about three weeks, but we are higher than we, you know, than we want to be. So now is the time to really stay the course with wearing masks. And there seems to be mounting evidence that it is, um, it's, it, it, it not only protects others, but it does protect the person that's wearing the mask. And, um, and, you know, it's anecdotal, we, we don't know for sure, but there, there may even be some relationship to the amount of virus that you actually, um, are infected with if you're wearing a mask. We don't know that yet, but, uh, definitely, uh, it seems to help, uh, protect you and others if you wear a mask. And as we get into the colder season with people staying inside and, you know, people wanting to, uh, celebrate with others during the holidays, which we're really encouraging people limit that, um, all the poor reason to wear a mask here, not what people hope.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, yeah, I couldn't agree with, uh, Kristin, your, your comments anymore. Um, but I also think that, um, and Commissioner Welsh can probably echo this, and that we have done a lot of retraining of young people in our public school systems and our private schools, um, and that we have had some remarkable success, um, there. I think that as we sit here tonight and all of us are masked and we have an excessive amount of, you know, protection, um, and safety procedures, that we are modeling the types of behaviors rather than, um, continuing down the road of meaningless mandates, which was taken out of our, um, I guess our authority by the governor's most recent order. Uh, I think the most important thing is that folks see that we're serious about it. Um, not that we have the highest Nielsen ratings for Tuesday afternoons in Leon County, but , uh, certainly that we are leading by example and that, um, as we do enter this cold season, more people will be indoors in warm environments and there will be, um, an anticipated, um, positivity rate. I think our task is to, um, continue to send the message and continue to beat the drum that, um, wear a mask when it's unsafe and you're not, and you're inside, uh, because it protects others as well as yourself. Uh, I've been pleasantly surprised by the amount of success that our local school systems have had in, um, slowing the spread. And, um, unfortunately, I guess we could learn from our youngest citizens out there, um, behaviors that are, that are safe and, and, um, viable regarding, um, spread of the virus. Um, being an example to others, um, particularly in public meetings like this, I think speaks much more than any, um, sort of mandate or language we issue. Just my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Um, I'm happy to have, to hear from everybody else that would like to speak. One thing I do want to remind people, though, is that we, we really want to try to move this meeting along and, uh, not spend too much time in an enclosed area together, even with masks on. Uh, so just want to keep that, just want to remind people that we need to, uh, be mindful of our time. Uh, Commissioner Proctor, and then Commissioner Maddox, and then Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Welch raised the question, uh, what is our posture with respect to the information, uh, coming out of CDC, what the county administrator said that we're getting spikes. Uh, um, Blackburn, uh, has not began to wave the white, the white flag of surrender, but she has not said that we can come out in spring again, uh, with respect to taking masks off. So I think that to the commissioners' question, uh, there are different takes about masks. Some view it as a religious, some view, interpret it as political, uh, some interpret it as a health, uh, question, um, some they're political party. I mean, there's so many takes on what a mask means. And we can't, and we, we, we tell people, um, don't, don't drink and, and drive, don't, don't, don't smoke marijuana, don't, a lot of things. But we're asking people to do something and they're not. And we, we ask people not to do something and they don't. So we're dealing with people. But, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I, I just think that we have to stay the course because it's our duty to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of our community. So keeping the Leon County flag high and, uh, ringing the bell of caution, of, uh, of, uh, prudence, and, uh, our community being sensitive and respecting, uh, our effort to, that's a good word, respect one the other with the mask. I think if we continue to couch the mask issue as one of, um, mutual respect, uh, maybe it's the one that's in the middle in terms of the different themes and takes that people view, uh, the mask as. So I want to congratulate our staff because God knows, uh, the word, uh, from the county has been consistent, it's been clear, it's been out there. And right now, uh, with record numbers, we cannot hit the break. We must keep our foot on the gas pedal to, um, put that message forward. And, uh, so to Commissioner Welch's question, uh, I think that we as a body should encourage our staff to keep the pedal to the metal.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioner Maddox.
Quickly, Mr. Chair, uh, Mr. Administrator, what is the, um, and, and I'm, and I'm going somewhere with this. What, what does the CDC say in terms of meetings, um, even with masks on, timing wise, and, and limit to people?
The C, the only guidance we can give you, commissioners, and that's, it's, it's as of the very moment, up to and including, um, Dr. Fauci today, uh, saying that congregate settings, meetings, conferences, et cetera, indoor congregate settings, that they are cautioning the duration and number, and they're not giving anything more specific than that.
Question, uh, I guess that, that leads to my next question. Right now, as we sit in this, in this, in this meeting, uh, for as long as we've sat here throughout the duration, uh, we are currently outside of what CDC recommendations would be, correct?
It, it's not specific relative to the time. They're just recommending to limit the duration of congregate meetings indoors.
I guess my point is that even as elected officials, as we sit here, uh, I'm pretty sure the majority of us would like to be sitting virtually instead of sitting in these chambers. And it would be more, uh, it'd be prevent, it'd be better for us as far as dealing with the pandemic if we were sitting virtually instead of in these chambers. But again, because the governor has said that we have to meet in person, we're here. And it's kind of the reverse of what I was saying before. I, I don't, I, I, do we want to continue to, to encourage our citizens, our citizens to wear masks? The answer to that question is absolutely yes. We want to continue to encourage them to wear masks. But just as now, we have, we can do absolutely nothing about wanting to meet outside of these chambers without a quorum in these chambers, we can do, we can do absolutely nothing to make anybody wear a mask in any establishment. We can only ask that our businesses comply with what we're attempting to do and what we're attempting, and how we're attempting to handle things in Leon County and, and maybe settle on the fact that, that things get better as we continue to comply with CDC, uh, recommendations as it, as it, as it, as it concerns, uh, the coronavirus and, uh, preventative actions that we're trying to take now. Um, Claudia has said we've been 5% for a long time now. Um, if we get more people on board, hopefully that, that, that goes down. Commissioner Proctor, I think you're right, I don't think we jump ship. Again, I just don't want us to go to a realm that, I, I want us to understand that we can only go as far, uh, as much as I believe in home rule, we can only go as far as the state will let us go in enforcement. We can only go as far as the state will let us go in terms of how we conduct ourselves, even in our own meetings. Because I, for one commissioner, and I think Commissioner Proctor is what you were trying to say a second ago, would love to be sitting even in my office, in the county courthouse, in all of us meeting, if in the same building, rather than sitting here in these chambers. I think it's safer for us not to be here, but because this is what the governor said we must do, this is what every government across the state of Florida is doing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Mr. Dozier.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, I appreciate hearing everyone's thoughts on this. Um, from my perspective, Madam County Attorney, please correct me if, um, I get this wrong, but after the governor's executive order at the end of September, we adjusted our mask mandate, our ordinance, and eliminated any kind of enforcement measure per his directive. But nothing in that order prevented us from having a mask ordinance without those enforcement measures. Is that correct?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Commissioner, uh, Dozier, that's correct. Uh, I would also like to point out that its executive order 2020-244, section four, which is what currently precludes us and suspends our ability to collect fines, will expire, uh, November 24th unless, unless it is extended by the governor. So in about a week, uh, our ability, we didn't remove it from the emergency ordinance, we just acknowledged that right now it's ineffective, uh, because of the executive order that's currently in effect. That could change in a week.
Okay. Well, then, that's good additional information. Thank you. Um, from my perspective, we have encouraged our community without any penalties when they were, um, when we could exercise them in the ordinance. Prior to September, there was no penalties, there was no enforcement issues. Um, yes, it fell to a lot of our businesses and our nonprofits and our schools particularly. They took action on their own. But to enforce these measures and our staff, along with partners throughout the community, has done an exceptional job with the, um, mask on campaign. And I see our signs up in businesses all over the community, and that is wonderful. Because of the increasing evidence, as Claudia has said, um, as we see in the news, as Dr. Fauci and others have said, that masks are our best defense right now, I feel it would be a disservice to those businesses and individuals in our community that have taken this seriously, that have put themselves on the front line to enforce the mask mandate within their own business, if we were to start stepping back. It's working for us right now without any enforcement mechanisms. If people choose to ignore it, we, we have to acknowledge this has become a political issue. I mean, we all know that full well. Um, I think the best thing we can do to protect the citizens of our county, um, and hopefully others, as we see the legislature coming here, as we have students coming from other counties, is to continue to represent the right, um, the best public health guidance that we, we can. And that exists in a written form as the ordinance, which we have defended successfully in court, as other communities have modeled. Um, it is intriguing to me that I, I just saw a slideshow of pictures from reorganization of, of the legislatures swearing in ceremonies. And I'm proud of our local delegation. The photos I saw, they were wearing masks, but not all members were. We are one of 18 counties that has a mask mandate, um, in the state. And I truly believe that when the history is written at this time, those of us who stepped up despite this being politically challenging are really going to be the ones that took the hard step to protect our community. We've lost 127 people in town. And for those who say, if you have health challenges or other things, you should stay home, I think we miss the point that we can spread it to those who are vulnerable so easily. Um, my future father-in-law is 92 and has left the house probably five times since March. That's not quality of life that we would want for anyone. He's doing that himself, but, um, for younger people who have health challenges, I mean, sometimes they can't avoid being out in public. So I agree that we are doing as much as we can within the guidance, and I'm, I'm going to be very interested to see what happens after the 24th. Thankfully, our numbers may be around 5%, but as I think we've seen, well, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. County Administrator or Claudia, that, um, we were appro, we were just under 4% for a time. We were, we were somewhere in the 3% range, and it has gone up. And now it's been holding at around 5% for the last few weeks. This is that delicate period. We don't want to pull back now before the holidays and see a surge like we've seen in other communities that really gets into that dangerous territory. So, um, the last thing I'm going to say, Mr. Chair, is that, uh, I remember one comment Dr. Fauci made back in, uh, March. He said, "If it look, if it feels like you're doing too much, you're doing the right thing because you, it's preventative." You don't, we can't institute masks after we have a huge surge. So, um, I just, I hope we can stay the course. I know we've all reflected on the challenges here, but I think we've got an ordinance that's in the right posture and really supports our community that's trying to do the right thing. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Madam County Attorney, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to, um, clarify, again, in terms of business establishments, the only obligation that the emergency ordinance imposes on business establishments is to post the signage. They are not tasked with enforcing the ordinance. That is the responsibility of law enforcement, uh, which, to Commissioner Dozier's point before, made a point of trying to educate the public as opposed to issuing any citations for the collection of fines to begin with. So just wanted to make that clear.
Mr. Chairman, a point of information from the county attorney.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair.
Um, county attorney, did you say that the governor's, uh, ordinance requiring us to come back to this building expires November 24th?
Uh, Madam County Attorney, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, no, that is the, um, it was the phase three executive order that the governor issued to move the state into phase three, but there was this section four of that particular execu, executive order, which, uh, is what basically prevented Leon County or any other county that had enacted any mitigating measures from, from collecting any fines associated with those. Uh, so right now, that's why the, the penalties and enforcement provision of our emergency ordinance is currently basically not effective. Um, the emergency order that had been extended in numerous times that allowed this body to meet virtually expired at the end of October, uh, as it did for every other local government entity in the state. So, so currently there is no, there's no executive order that allows the, the body to meet virtually.
Mr. Chairman, with that being said, uh, I'd like to make a motion, uh, that captures the sentiments, I think, that I've heard. And that is that our board would, uh, send to the governor a request from the chair, uh, resolution or whatever, that the, uh, powers of the home rule, home rule counties, that we're able to have virtual meetings. Uh, I like, within this motion, for the data that has come out from, uh, Ms. Blackburn is included, uh, the data from CDC is included. Uh, I know that Florida A&amp;M University's, uh, numbers have spiked. I teach there. Um, I just think that for us to build a case, to make the case that we have the additional tool at our discretion for each county as to whether or not the counties can or cannot meet, uh, you know, their desire. So also there is a motion that we send that letter, uh, asking the governor to, uh, extend, uh, two counties the chance to meet virtually.
I'll, I'll second that motion. For, for the simple fact that we are, uh, we, we fight for home rule, in fact. And I believe that, that each county should be able to make that, that decision on their own. Uh, so I'll second that motion, Commissioner Proctor. I think it's a good motion that counties be able to make that decision on, on their own, how they feel, uh, and their constituents feel about them meeting publicly. I just think it's oxymoron for us to have a mask mandate as one of those 18 counties, yet and still we sit here meeting, even with masks on, outside of CDC man, uh, recommendations, uh, talking about, uh, the, the fact that we want our citizens to wear masks. So I, I second that motion. I think it's a good motion, Commissioner Proctor.
Uh, motion's been, uh, made by Vice Chair Proctor and seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Any discussion? Okay. Commissioner Cummings.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay. I've had my light on, perhaps. I, I didn't know how to work it. I apologize.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had my request to speak on quite a while, so I apologize.
My apologies, ma'am.
But in the interest of time and not being redundant, uh, I certainly agree with the sentiments of the commission, commissioners, and I agree with, uh, Commissioner Proctor, Proctor's motion. Um, and I would certainly, it's already been seconded, but I certainly agree that we're a home rule, uh, county, and that because of the spike that's going on right now, I think we need to take some extraordinary, uh, steps in that regard. So I certainly support his motion.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, can you repeat the, uh, motion for me, Mr. Proctor or Mr. Chairman?
Let me give it a shot. Uh, Vice Chair Proctor basically recommended a motion that the, uh, letter, uh, coming from the chairman, uh, to Governor DeSantis would, uh, urge Governor DeSantis to, um, to Governor DeSantis would urge Governor DeSantis to extend the, to reinstate his executive order, allowing the commission to host virtual meetings, using data from the CDC as grounds for that, and Ms. Blackburn as grounds for that request. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. Let me say, I like Commissioner Proctor's, Vice Chair Proctor's motion. The one concern I have, and I've not thought this thoroughly through, is we do have cases where we have our schools and our students meeting in classrooms throughout a day. And yes, they're wearing masks and they are physically distanced. But I don't know what the resolution is for that, other than to state that there would then be some differences in the way that we ask our own meetings to be held and what we acknowledge our students within Leon County School System doing. I don't know how to reconcile that. I understand Vice Chair Proctor's motion. I think it makes sense on its face, but there are interconnected areas here within the county that create that dichotomy, and I'm not sure how to rectify it. Commissioner Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the schools are a unique case, and I think this is going to be an evening of reflecting on our new commission. We happen to have two people who work for our Leon County Schools here and are dedicated to protecting our kids every day, and the schools have done an exceptional job. I was actually going to ask the maker of the motion, Mr. Vice Chair, congratulations, to, if we could be sure to include other Sunshine Boards, particularly committees or boards that operate, and this would include COCA, Tourism, or Visit Tallahassee, other types of boards like that that operate in the Sunshine, but may have challenges in meeting social distancing requirements and getting a quorum in the room. For two of the boards that I sit on, Innovation Park, we can only accommodate a certain number of people in the room, so the executive director has to make sure we have a quorum in the room and everyone else is required to be virtual. The most creative response to this was actually COCA Board Meeting. You can leave it to COCA to get creative, right? We held the meeting in the parking lot of The Moon, and we linked in virtually, but we were all physically present in our cars parked next to each other, and we could see each other, and we were in the same space. They did vet that, Madam Attorney, I think, with a few folks, and it may not be how we conduct our next board meeting, but there are a lot of our Sunshine Boards that are facing a lot more challenges than the County Commission in accommodating these new rules. So I would love for this letter to include other Sunshine Boards. For us particularly, in the County Commission, we have struggled with public comments, public input. We were just kind of getting into that space where we could have virtual, real-time comments and written comments. If we have to meet in person, and I agree with the comments Commissioner Maddox, you, Commissioner Proctor, others have made, that this is not ideal during a pandemic, to be sure, but my concern is more for those other boards that cannot accommodate social distancing in the rules and meet quorum. So, Mr. Vice Chair, would you be willing to include that in the letter?
I want the chairman, I want the chairman to be very, very comfortable. If the chairman is comfortable, I wouldn't force a letter if you can carry that water too. And I recognize the dynamics of which Commissioner Dozier's speaking to, and if you're comfortable with your name on that, that's fine with me.
Well, one thing I, thank you. Commissioner Dozier and Vice Chair Proctor, one thing I might recommend is with the guidance of, should this motion pass and the letter is, and you all, and the board is instructing the chair to send this letter, I would seek the counsel of our county attorney to basically take a look at what the original executive order was for allowing us to participate in virtual meetings and essentially mirror that executive order to what this letter would call for. Would that be amenable to you, Vice Chair?
That would be good, and as an argument, I think that when the governor, his order went into effect, I think that it would be wise to show where COVID's numbers were at that time. And certainly, he did not anticipate that these numbers would have spiked and been well advanced from our highest levels before. So when the governor put that into effect, let's show the data of what was then and if, ensuring where it is now.
Okay.
With respect to the schools, they have that option. The children got the option. They can go or not go. We're asking the governor to give us the same option that the schools now have, to do virtual, to do in person.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Let's try to wrap this up. Commissioner Maddox?
Mr. Chair, two things. One, Commissioner brought it up, you do have an option of whether or not you want a senior child at school. If everybody just decided to keep their child home, then additionally, it would be virtual. But some don't have that option because they have to go back to work. The second part of it, Mr. Chair, is that I think, I think this rises to a level, I know we're asking for a letter, but Commissioner Proctor, I almost think this rises to a level of a resolution, given it's a, it's a policy that we're asking the governor to consider changing. And I think it gives it a little more depth and strength to it as a resolution coming from the board rather than just a letter coming from the chair. But I'd like for the county attorney, if I could, to have, I think I'm in the right posture saying resolution. I know that's usually on legislative issues that we ask for resolutions, but would this be the right posture to ask for such instead of just sending a letter to the governor requesting?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Commissioner Maddox, the resolution is usually used as an expression of the board's policy and direction, so that would be appropriate to use a resolution in this case.
And I think, I think, Mr. Chair and Mr. Vice Chair, I think that it carries a little more strength in the letter, and one, it shows the cohesiveness of this board to say that that's what we want. Sometimes a letter from the chair can simply be just a letter from the chair. I don't think there's anything prevents you as chair of the County Commission from writing a letter anybody wants to. But a resolution from this board saying 7-0 or whatever passes, that we want this, the governor considered, to consider this for these reasons, puts a little more strength behind what we're asking for. So Commissioner Proctor, I would ask that you amend your motion to reflect a resolution instead of simply a letter from the chair.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I recognize the recommendation, and I accede to it and withdraw, change the letter to a resolution.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. So there's a motion on the floor made by Vice Chair Proctor, seconded by Commissioner Maddox, which would be a resolution from the County Commission to the governor urging the governor to consider reinstating the executive order that would allow us to have a virtual meeting, using data from the CDC and Ms. Blackburn. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Yeah, just quick clarification on the motion. I believe Commissioner Dozier's asked for it to reflect all Sunshine Boards to be a part of, and not just our commission, but Sunshine Boards to have the ability to make a decision of meeting in person versus meeting virtually. Correct?
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. That was not a question posed to the Vice Chair Proctor, because I thought that we had a, I may have mistaken him, but I thought we had a consensus that this resolution would mirror what the original executive order was from the governor, allowing us to participate in virtual meetings.
And, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Madam, yes, Mr. Dozier.
The executive order did cover all Sunshine bodies, so if it mirrors that language, I think we do capture it. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, for noting that, but so long as it is in line with that original executive order, you, yeah.
Madam County Attorney.
That's correct. I know Commissioner Proctor, as the maker of the motion, accepted that as the second. Commissioner Maddox?
Yes.
Okay, great. So all those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chair. Okay, moving on, let's go on to consent.
Mr. Chairman, consent? All aye of the consent for the items pulled for consent.
Well, yes. Mr. County Administrator, which items in the consent agenda have been pulled, sir?
Mr. Chairman, we've got items four, seven, and 16 pulled from the consent agenda.
Okay. Mr. County Administrator, are there any members of the public who wish to speak on the consent items that have not been pulled?
There is one speaker card on item number nine. Does Chairman, would you like me to call on that speaker?
Yes, please, I would.
Okay, that's item number nine on consent, Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims, sir, you have three minutes, and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, Mr. Chair. Want to say congratulations to County Commissioner Cummings and County Commissioner Welch. We're very pleased to have you here. Commissioner Dozier, one who has always been on this dais and fighting for transparency and equality. I want to demonstrate to you how staff treats everybody the same. Had a very stressful day Friday. My wife took my phone, put me on timeout when I got home. So when I woke up, she was asleep. I sneak and got my phone, and I got this message. "Sorry, Stanley, just got your voicemail. Give me a call tomorrow or Monday." V. Now, that message was sent to me Friday at 9:14. I did not call him because prior to that, Mr. Maddox, I had already spoken to Ben. Pulled Ben to the side and addressed my concerns. Ben already has called his staff. Now, we're not eye to eye, but there is an exchange of information where we are educating one another. There were some things that I was not clear on, and now they understand my issue of concern. This is when government works for everyone. So no one can tell me that I still say Vince is my brother from another mother. It matters, you see how suave his haircut is? It's because Vince knows that people need another chance. That's just not something that staging he does in order to make you all appreciate him. Vince, I said $25 for this, but I think this is going to have to kind of go up a little bit more. But one thing I want to be able to spend the remainder of my time on is one thing that this pandemic has discovered, that we have two sets of poor. We have our working poor and our untraditional poor. Now, our CARES Act is addressing some of our traditional working poor, but our non-traditional poor is not being addressed. I know you're saying, Commissioner Dozier's saying, "Give me an example of my non-traditional poor." May I have 30 seconds?
Commissioner, yeah, give me like 10 seconds, 10 seconds.
10 seconds. An example of our non-traditional poor, if you all passed the mandate right now and says, "I will pay everybody's cell phone deal for the next year, but it has to be in your name, you got to have an ID with your address on it." You then have excluded the non-traditional.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. All right, Mr. County Administrator, actually to the board, is there a motion to approve the remaining items from consent that have not been pulled?
Simmons.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. A motion to approve the items on consent that have not been pulled has been made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Welch. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. County Administrator, the first item of consent that has been pulled, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number four has been pulled from consent. This item was pulled by yourself, Commissioner Rick Minor. It is, follows board direction at our September 29th meeting for staff to evaluate the potential of joining with the Government Alliance on Race and Equity in a membership capacity. The analysis is before you, and we are recommending joining at one of the levels as described in the item. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. County Administrator. Are there any speakers for this item?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, what, I had met with Lauren Kelly Manders months ago, and she had brought this to my attention, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, which seemed really intriguing. And shortly after that, I was doing some volunteer work for some national folks, and GARE, G-A-R, the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, kept on coming up in these conversations. And so what Lauren and I decided to do is reach out to the Big Bang Minority Chamber as well as the Capsulety Chamber, spoke with them at length about the ideas in this agenda item. Basically, GARE is a government alliance of state, local, county governments across the country that are all trying to share best practices to infuse racial equity into their operations. And a part of that is using what they call the Racial Equity Toolkit, which is a series of questions that you can ask as strategic points within your government's operations to ensure that racial equity is incorporated inherent into the work that we do. The agenda item, I think, explains that pretty clearly. One thing that the county administrator and his staff have done is they are recommending an associate membership, which I think is a good start for us. That allows us to get into this network of other governments that are all working together to seek out and develop the best practices for incorporating racial equity into their operations. One thing that the agenda item talks about is starting with the CHSP process as a way to introduce the GARE toolkit into those operations. That, I think, is a good start. That is shared, that opinion is shared by Katrina Tugerson, as well as Antonio Jefferson from the respective chambers. What I'd like to do, and the reason why I pulled this, was to have, if there would be a motion, if one of you would consider making a motion, to basically bring back this agenda item in six months, after it's approved here, bring it back in six months where we have essentially a status report of how the GARE toolkit has been applied to CHSP, and then also having that agenda item recommend where else within Leon County government we might be able to use that toolkit as a way to incorporate racial equity into our operations. So that would be my motion, if someone would be willing to issue that motion. Commissioner Maddox? Thank you, sir. Any second on that? Commissioner Proctor, our Vice Chair Proctor? Any discussion? Mr. Maddox?
I'll take, if you recognize me after that item.
After the?
After we get through with this.
After the vote?
After we get through with this item.
Oh, okay, great, yes. Any other discussion on Amendment Item 4 and the motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I sincerely, uh, salute you, kudos. Oftentimes, I have felt somewhat castigated for attempting to be a sort of a conscience with respect to racial equity within government, Leon Counties, and as many as I've ever felt like talking to. And so to institutionalize and bring forward a curriculum to our government, which is not just Proctor talking, this is excellent. So it definitely allows for the community of Leon to have even greater and stronger reasons when we pay taxes to know that the government that we're paying taxes to actually is conscientized to the level what this program attempts to foster and make a part of our culture. And I think that your efforts to season and to give a little soul seasoning to the culture of Leon, our government, is excellent. So thank you for what you have brought to the table today.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Any other discussion? Okay, moving on to a vote, all those in favor of the motion by Commissioner Proctor, seconded by the Vice Chair?
Yes.
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Yeah, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. County Administrator.
Real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maddox.
Um, y'all gonna hate me, but I'm gonna do it anyway. In effort to try to stay with policy, we can waive or not, our policy says we make motions before discussion, and we can waive that or we can do it, but, Mr. Chair, I wanted to put it up to your discretion, but if I'm not correct, introduction, policy, I mean, I'm sorry, introduction, motion, then discussion, correct? Madam Attorney?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That is correct. Commissioner Maddox?
I'm fine with it that way. If all the other commissioners are fine with it that way, we can go that way, or we can simply just at this point waive those policies and give shared discretion, but I want to make sure we got two new commissioners, we're in the first meeting of the fiscal year that we start this thing off right, as far as. as those parliamentary policies that we have in place.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Maddox. And I thought of you today as I was preparing for this evening and I remember the point that you raised at the last meeting and inadvertently I spoke before a motion was conducted, which I'm not sure how a chair would do that if I can't make the motion.
Well, you could state the motion and somebody else can make it for you.
Okay.
If you're the speaker, then that's still kind of qualifies as your chair or you could pass the gavel and then make the motion.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Maddox, for pointing that out. This is my first meeting as chair. I'm certainly, I want to hear from the rest of the board on what they think will work best. If it's something that we want to go ahead and decide to change from the letter of the board policy, I think we might want to actually put that into the board policy, which is what Commissioner Maddox was pointing out at the previous meeting. So, okay, any other comments or questions before moving on? Next item, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item, item number seven, is a proposed voluntary annexation of residential phases 1A, 2 and 3 of the Falls Chase Planned Unit Development. And we're happy to take any questions you might have on this. This item was pulled by Commissioner Dozier.
Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will start this off with making a motion for staff recommendation, option one.
I'll second that.
I pulled this item not because, well, let's be frank, we don't have a lot of authority when it comes to annexation, but this is one I wouldn't oppose anyhow. The Falls Chase property has been long, long, long under discussion and there is now residential construction happening on the property. I think some of us have done a tour with the owner's representative and Jerry Miller, the representative of Buck Lake Alliance. And it's going to be pretty exciting to see the conservation easement come to fruition so there is public access. But this is a huge change for our community. And particularly, I wanted to pull this item, Mr. Chair, because our staff has done an exceptional job administering the Buck Lake Alliance agreement for many, many years. I can't, I'm not looking at the date right now. But this is in District Five and I've worked closely with Buck Lake Alliance over the years. Every single time I talk to members of BLA, they are praising one member of our staff or another, and normally multiple members. To navigate this agreement and if, they have a role in approving a lot of different stages of the development process and it's very complicated and they have relied heavily on our staff. So this has been a very unique development over the years, to be sure, that I just wanted to share my appreciation for the members of the community who stuck with this, but primarily for our staff who've really helped guide them. And I am very happy to see that the agreement will follow the annexation and I have no doubt our city's partners will do the same in the future and work closely with BLA. So with that, Mr. Chair, I have no other comments and happy to approve this item.
Great, Commissioner Dozier, thank you very much. See no, there's no other speakers. Motion for option one made by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Next item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 16 is a status report regarding curbside collection services provided by Waste Pro and we're happy to answer any questions you might have on this. Pulled by Commissioner Dozier.
Commissioner Dozier?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, I believe, Mr. County Administrator, our second quarterly report from Waste Pro and this was something that we asked for after extending the agreement earlier this year. As promised over the summer, I'm going to pull this item off of consent, at least for the near future. I think it's important for us to keep this front and center to celebrate the good things that are happening, but also just to reflect on frankly, one of the most important contracts we have for residents in the undercorporated area. So if there's no other comments, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if any of the other board members do, but I'll make a motion for option one.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Is there a second for option one?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Vice Chair Proctor, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Dozier pulls the item, which in terms of doing a relational connection here, the GARE, G-A-R-E, is the kind of requirement that not only does our, that we're talking about our county's government, but a culture of equity for those that we do business with. And I think that to the extent that we can innovate, renovate and potentially look at elements of GARE and make them applicable to Waste Pro, Waste Management and the big bigs that we spend millions of this community's dollars is fruitful. And I'd like to encourage our review of how GAREs would not only apply inwardly, but how we can use it externally. And I know that we have agenda item 17 tonight, which also seeks to address that cultural effort for equity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. See no other comments. The motion made for option one by Commissioner Dozier, seconded by Commissioner Maddox. All those in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next we have citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. Mr. County Administrator, do we have any speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, we have one speaker on non-agenda items, Barney Bishop.
Hey, Mr. Bishop, sir, you have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome, Commissioners. My name is Barney Bishop. I live at 2215 Thomasville Road. I just wanted to compliment you about your discussion on face mask mandates. I wasn't going to testify about this, but when I heard the issue and I heard the discussion, I wanted to comment just a moment. To me, it seems that there are three kinds of people in the United States and in Florida. There are the people that are fearful and those people are going to wear masks because they are fearful and that's fine. There are people that are vigilant, people that know that they should wear it when they need to wear it and for them, a face mandate doesn't have to be done whatsoever, just like for the fearful. The third kind of people are the folks that believe that this is an infringement on their constitutional rights. And so I would say, I applaud you for not doing an enforcement piece on this because I think the most important thing for all of y'all to consider is, is that the American people and the citizens of Leon County in Florida need to have trust in government. And when government tells them to do something and they don't want to do it, it becomes a cynic, they become cynics about government and they're not going to listen. It doesn't mean that you shouldn't try to encourage them to do it and you've done that. I'm not a fan of wearing a mask, but I do it because y'all mandate it and it's the appropriate thing to do. I think any business that wants to say that if you want to come into their store, that you have to wear a mask, that's entirely their prerogative. That's their business and if they want you to wear a mask, you should wear a mask. And if you don't, then you shouldn't go there. So everybody has the privilege to go wherever they want, but I think that in doing a mandate on face mask, I think you're taking the right approach, but I think that enforcement is, Commissioner Maddox said at the very beginning, is problematic and I don't think that it instills confidence in government for you to enforce something like that unless somebody becomes violent and then law enforcement's called in. So that's all the comments I wanted to make. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Moving on to general business, next item, Mr. County Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 17 seeks the board acceptance of a status report on funding availability for minority and women owned small business enterprises. This was something that comes at the board's direction for us to take a closer look at. The item also seeks the board's authorization to partner with FAMU Federal Credit Union to establish a $1 million revolving micro lending program to enhance and diversify the existing capital pool for, in the market utilizing FAMU CARES Act stimulus funding. Commissioners, the board requested an agenda item during the workshop, the board budget workshop back in July to explore options for micro loan programs for minority and women owned businesses, including an analysis of the types of financing currently available in the local marketplace. Since that time, the federal treasury and the state of Florida have issued revised guidance related to CARES Act funding that allows for a revolving micro lending program to expend or to extend beyond the September or the December 30th, 2020 deadline date for CARES expenditures. Should the board authorize utilization of the CARES Act funds for the revolving loan program for minority and women owned businesses? FAMU Credit Union would administer the program and would contribute $150,000 annually for administrative costs. OEV and the Capital City Chamber of Commerce and the Big Ben Minority Chamber of Commerce will promote and launch the program, which FAMU Credit Union anticipates would happen by February. Semi-annual reports will be provided to OEV to monitor loan making performance and to ensure financial capital is reaching the minority and women owned businesses. Commissioners, with that, we are recommending options one, two and three. We're very happy to answer any questions that you might have and I should note that we have several speakers on this item.
Okay, thank you, Mr. County Administrator.
Would you like to go with the speakers first?
Yes, please, let's start with the speakers.
Okay, the first speaker we have on this item is Katrina Tugerson.
Ms. Tugerson, please, please come to the podium and you have three minutes and please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Alan has already told me not to take my whole three minutes, but I just wanted to say in this effort with Big Ben Minority Chamber and also thank you to Chair Commissioner Minor and Commissioner Maddox for coming out when both of the chambers convened and had a town hall meeting and supporting the efforts and what we're doing and moving forward. And this is a great day and opportunity and thank you guys for listening. So we wanted to make sure that we come up and share gratitude for listening and listening to the community and we thank you again.
Tugerson, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Antonio Jefferson.
Antonio Jefferson, 914 Railroad Avenue. Good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, County Staff, County Administrator. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. It is not very often in many communities around this country where elected officials really take on such a tough issue and such a tough moment and say that, you know what, we're going to put brown, brown and black folks in a position where they can be just as successful as anyone else in the community and I mean, as it relates to businesses. Your work over the last few months since the COVID has impacted our community is nothing less than outstanding, honorable and just reflective of the great community that Tallahassee Leon County is. And I'm hopeful that in this moment, that the rest of the state is looking here to see what great leadership that we have in this moment. I will tell you that we're going to continue as the Big Ben Minority Chamber of Commerce and Cal State Chamber, we will continue to advocate on behalf of women and minority owned businesses in this community, but it's such a pleasure to know that we have a listening ear on the other side of that conversation. And on the behalf of both of our chambers, I would like to say thank you to Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Minor for your leadership and joining us for that meeting. We're going to have a reconvening in February just to go back and look at the progress that we have made. I thank all of you for the moments and times that you've taken to take my calls as well as others that are involved in this movement. And again, I am honored to be part of this community and to be led by such great county commissioners and county staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Mr. County Administrator, next speaker.
The next speaker, Sheila Montgomery.
Good evening and hello. This is the first time I've been to the chamber, so don't let me get too nervous here.
Okay, Miss Montgomery, if you could please give us your full name and your address for the record.
Yes, I am Sheila Montgomery, the President and CEO of FAMU Federal Credit Union. We're located at 1610 South Monroe Street. And thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak briefly about FAMU Federal Credit Union and its commitment to be an integral part of the financial community of Tallahassee, Florida. FAMU is the fourth oldest credit union in the nation. We're also the second largest HBCU credit union in the nation. I will pause to let you know that we are going to be number one very soon. In addition, we are celebrating 85 years dedicated to serving our members of this community. FAMU is more than just a business lending entity. We are an integral part of this community. We have served our members for such a long time to help them to make sure they can have the financial resources they need to succeed. Even though COVID has come to our communities, it does not discriminate, but it has hurt our business community. We're asking and we're excited about being a part of trying to find a way to mitigate some of those losses in our community. Our goal is to be a part of the solution. We ask that you continue to look upon us as a collaborative partner with the chambers, with OEV and with your commission. Thank you very much for allowing me to take time to let you know that FAMU is part of
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Mr. County Administrator, any other speakers?
Yes, our final speaker on this item, Stanley Sims.
Mr. Sims, you have three minutes and please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Stanley Sims. I'm at 1320 Avondale Way. I'm in that small fourth group that wear masks because we believe in scientists and we believe in science and some people haven't raised to that occasion, but they won't be at 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue Lonely because I got that By Don Harris dance on me, you know. But anyway, let's talk about this money. When you believe in science, you also believe in economics. And I'm here to say thank you, thank you, thank you to this commission, but I'm also asking that we have to really rethink how we redistribute wealth in communities of color. And so I'm asking, now that we have this extra money, Jimbo, there's an old lady and you probably know her, she runs a nonprofit, not so set up, government standard, but she gives food out, you know, because she keeps the traffic on 20, about 9:30, 10 o'clock, but she gives that out. Why is it she's not able to access some of these Leon County CARES money? When we know in this community what she does? Why is verification so difficult? So I'm so excited that I have even been attending other meetings and what we're saying is, when we're saying reinvest in our communities, not just mom and pop organizations, let's leverage some of these connections that we have. I've been talking with the Capital City Chamber, I've been talking with Mr. Jefferson here and God knows, y'all pray for Mr. Jefferson because I have really been bending his ears lately. Because what I'm asking him to do is, let's rethink this thing. I want Mr. Jefferson to call Keisha. Nick, you know who Keisha I'm talking about?
Which Keisha?
Keisha in Atlanta, the mayor.
Oh, yeah.
I want her to, I want Mr. Jefferson to call Keisha and Keisha going to call Reverend Bryant. Reverend Bryant has just launched a new restaurant finance industry called Arizona. Guess what that do? We get Arizona here, that means Kazel from House Liza Potomi going to stop by. Guess what? Jimbo, that means the good white folks on the Northeast Side going to want some bougie collard greens and they're going to come down to French Town. That's sustainable economics. We've got to really rethink how we invest in our community. I'm very thankful that Mr. Ben Pennegry has allowed me to be at the table to discuss these things and if you fail science, you won't wear your mask. I made a C plus. I wasn't that good in science, but I'm glad a C plus allows me to respect my mom who is fighting cancer and me.
Thank you, Pastor Sims. So on the item, I'd like to go ahead and it basically adhered to the board policy that Commissioner Maddox had spoke of at the last meeting, so is there a motion? Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move option one. Mr. Chair, I move for option recommenda, I mean, I'm sorry, option recommendation. Staff recommendations of options one, two, and three. Second.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Is there a second?
Mr. Chair.
Second.
The vice chair is seconded.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Oh, okay.
I defer.
Commissioner Cummings, thank you very much, ma'am. So speakers, I have Commissioner Dozier, then Commissioner Cummings, and then Commissioner Maddox. Mr. Dozier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That was the order you had, correct?
Pardon me?
That's the order you had?
Uh, that's what I have on my screen, and then Commissioner Maddox said something.
Point of order?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Maddox.
Madam County Attorney, if I have a subsidiary motion to the main motion, is that made with the motion? Is that made upon being recognized by the chair to make that subsidiary motion?
Madam County Attorney.
As soon as you're recognized, you're able to make a substitute motion.
Mr. Chair, you asked if I wanted to make a motion. I wanted to make a motion, but I also wanted to make a secondary motion. I mean, a subsidiary motion, if you allow me to do so and recognize me to do so, you move to speakers after I made the motion, so.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. We already have a motion on the table, right?
I understand, but there's, with the main motion, a subsidiary motion can be made without objecting to the main motion and an amendment to the main motion. Is that correct, Madam Attorney?
Madam County Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's correct.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you.
You have the floor to make a second motion.
Thank you. In an effort, because of the situation we're in, I'd like to make a subsidiary motion that we limit debate on this item to three minutes per commissioner. That's my subsidiary motion.
Okay. So that, Madam County Attorney, that motion, those two motions should be considered as one combined motion?
No, sir. The first motion is for the main motion.
Yep.
The subsidiary motion is a second, separate motion that receives a second and is voted on. If there's no second, then it does, for lack of a second, anything.
Okay.
But it's voted on in the moment.
Is there a second on the secondary motion?
Second, Mr. Chairman, although I have talked so many years on this matter until I don't even need to talk.
Okay. Motion's made, the secondary motion's been made by Commissioner Maddox and seconded by Vice Chair Proctor. Any discussion? Commissioner Dozier.
Mr. Chair, we're spending more time talking about parliamentary procedures than we are talking about the item. I'm not sure that assuming there's going to be a long discussion is necessary. The chair can wrap that up. I was going to bring up some thoughts about our procedures. Commissioner Maddox is absolutely correct that if we have procedures on the books, we should follow them or acknowledge that we're not going to. I was saving that for comment time, so I wasn't trying to take much time during the meeting to unpack these things, and it is rather complicated. So I would say for now that the business before this commission is substantial. If we want to hold ourselves to three minutes apiece, that is fine. But typically, that will impact any minority voices and, meaning if we don't agree on a particular item, it will impact those of us who may want to have more dialogue. But it's not just that, it's innovative ideas. Our discussion often produces innovative ideas. So if we are not interested in hearing from each other, we walk in with our own ideas and we limit our discussion, that's something we can talk about. And again, I'm going to bring this up at the end of the day, but I think this rule is outdated, and in my 10 years on the commission, we have never had it in effect. So we can certainly encourage ourselves to limit our comments. But I would also encourage everyone to vote against this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dozier. Just a reminder, we do have seven minutes until the public hearing, which must start at 6:00 PM. Commissioner Cummings.
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion to adopt the recommendation of staff on item number 17. And I guess I'm not sure, I wanted to just comment on that particular item. If I'm in order, I certainly applaud staff. I think they've done a great job. They went back and gave us some historical analysis about the need for this collaboration that they have set forth in item number 17. I think the anecdotal documentation they set forth was great, and I think all of us from reading the summary that has been provided by staff shows us many of the barriers that minorities and women businesses have faced, especially here in Leon County. So in the interest of time, I certainly support the recommendation, being a minority, women-owned business myself, I have up and close firsthand experience, and I certainly believe that this is a marriage, a collaboration that will be very beneficial to the businesses, minority women-owned businesses here in Leon County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Dozier, I have you in the queue to speak again.
Mr. Chair, following Commissioner Cummings' good remarks, which I agree with on this item, I wanted to make some comments about this item. My previous comments were about-
Yes.
Commissioner Maddox's other motion that's still on the table. So do you want to dispense with that before we get back to?
Yes. The motion on the floor right now is a secondary motion for the two-minute time limit.
Yes, sir. Subsidiary, and I'd like to make a comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My subsidiary motion is in respect to the fact that CDC says we shouldn't be here in the first place. Three minutes for each commissioner should be more than enough time for us to be able to get our points across, while we've been briefed. We all know exactly what we think about this. Yes, more conversation could bring about better ideas. If that's the case, we could also take a motion to extend the debate period. It's all a part of parliamentary procedure, but if we have no parliamentary procedure, then we have no order. Again, my effort was simply to try to make sure that we respected all the time in CDC mandate. If we don't want to do that, then I'll stop talking. But at the same time, again, we said early when people were masked, but we'll sit here and talk about this item for 45 minutes without consideration of the fact that we've already been here three hours or so, but CDC said we shouldn't be here now. I want to sit here as long as you guys want to sit here, but at the same time, I don't, again, double standard to ask people to wear masks, begging to wear masks, and we're sitting here outside of CDC recommendation ourselves. So that's what the motion was made for, not to mention, each one of those citizens came in there and said what they had to say within three minutes, and I feel like we should be able to do the same. Under normal circumstances, I might not have asked for it, but given where we're sitting, given the times that we're in, and the fact that CDC said we shouldn't be here, I did. If it fails, it fails, but it won't be because I didn't ask for it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. So the vote now is on the secondary motion to limit county commissioner comments to three minutes apiece on each topic for this evening. All those in favor of the motion, the secondary motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. The motion carries. So for the rest of the evening, all the agenda items will be limited to three minutes per county commissioner.
I'm sorry, the rest of the evening, or was this?
Was it?
I originally asked for this item, Mr. Chair.
This was just this item.
Okay. My mistake, my mistake.
Thanks, sir.
And now, Mr. Chair, we hardly have any time, so could we?
I understand. I think at this point, we've got two minutes until 6:00 PM where we need to start the public hearing. I'd like to have a motion to waive the order and suspend our business to conduct the public hearing at 6:00 PM, at which time, after the public hearing agenda items have been reviewed and discussed, we would then return to irregular order business.
I'll move. Thank you.
All right. Any, no debate on that, I think. All those in favor of the motion? Yes, Commissioner Dozier?
I'm sorry, we still have an active motion on item 17. Is that correct?
That is correct, but my motion to waive the order, we have to suspend business to conduct the public hearing.
Okay.
All those in favor of the motion to waive the order of business, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, so we'll take a two-minute break if you like.
I'll take it. Thank you.